Thanks for joining us for City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Councilmember Jenny Geisler. Today, we're talking about both the May 7th and the May 21st City Council meetings. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you, always happy to be here.
Yeah, it's kind of gloomy out again today. We've kind of had this month, we've also had the rain, but that didn't stop two events that we had here this past weekend.
Exactly.
The annual events that are here in the city.
Yep, we had the Public Works Open House last Saturday, which was the culmination of Infrastructure Week, and they had a couple hundred people, which is a little less than they have had in the past, but still very good participation. The other one was on Sunday, was the Home Remodeling Tour, and that's where we had six houses open and people toured those, and a total of 1,000 people went through all of the different houses to see the great things that people are doing with remodeling their homes and using the Homes for Generation program that is sponsored by the city.
Yeah, well, so great that still people attended that. I was thinking about the homeowners that had these people coming through their homes on a rainy day, but people got to tour the homes, they saw a lot of different projects, different remodels, and those seem to be well-attended every year.
Right, and a lot of great ideas for people who can say, now what can I do with my home? And a lot of interest, it's been very positive.
All right, well, happy that folks still got out in the rain to do that. Well, moving to our council meetings now, we want to start off by talking about the Tuesday, May 21st meeting. One of the first items there was a proclamation, this is for Coon Rapids Women of Today.
Yep, they're a great organization in the city, that their tenet is for community service, personal growth, and building friendships, and they do great things within the city, and so we like to recognize them, and you know, heard that they also make great chili, that I think they won the Chili Cook-Off last year.
Yeah.
So, just a great group.
Yeah.
We're happy to have them in the community.
Yeah, and this is, they've been here, I know, at least last year, so they keep coming back each year for the proclamation.
Yep.
So, good to see. All right, Coon Rapids adopted a resolution accepting a donation of funds. This is from the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation and the Home Improvement Fund.
Right, and so, this is a corollary or partner to our Homes for Generation. It was something that we started called Front Door, and the Mortgage Assistance Foundation said, you know, let's put $100,000 to this, and it was for grants, so grants, free money, of $1,000 to $5,000 based on the project, and it was for an exterior improvement of your home, so looking at the front door. And with that, the applications just came in droves, it was phenomenal, and they were able to fund 37 projects out of that initial $100,000. The problem is, they had around 300 additional applications that needed to be funded or something, and so what they've done is, the Mortgage Assistance Foundation has put up another $150,000 with the goal to fund up to, hopefully, 50 more projects, and what is going to have to happen is, it's going to be a lottery, you know, because there's so many people who are looking at this, and that's going to happen Wednesday, the 29th of May, so, the end of May, there will be a lottery drawing for people who would be eligible to then get these grant funds. And what, with that first $100,000, it actually generated $570,000 worth of improvements in the city, and that means housing values are better, it means that we have people working in our city, and it's just a great incentive and keeps things nice and fresh, and so hopefully, we'll be able to look at the success of the Front Door program and see how can we continue that, and you know, look at all of the people who have already applied.
All right, so the lesson in this is, when you say free money, they will come.
Exactly.
Right?
Exactly, it's been very, very successful.
All right, and they're reevaluating things, I think, for the future going forward.
Absolutely, you know, and, you know, so part of that's going to be, you know, we'll get through the second round and take a breath and say, what did we do right, what did we do, or could we do better, and how do we make this an ongoing program, or be able to see where could we get funding to be able to continue to do this.
Yeah, and even without that, there are a lot of home programs through the city that you can check on, so go to the city's website, coonrapidsmn.gov, there's a lot of information there on the different types of programs available for home improvements.
Absolutely.
All right, council considered an emergency resolution, or it's for a mill and overlay repairs on Xavier Street. The mill and overlay is an emergency, I don't think it was an emergency resolution, but it needs to be done, correct?
Right, right, and if, any of you who've driven around the city, it was a really, really tough year for the roads, when, you know, as Mr. Hammer, our Public Works Director, will explain, that as we got the rain and then cold, and there was all the ice, and then you have to plow it a little different, and to really get the ice up, you, sometimes part of the road comes up depending, and Xavier Street was one that really got hit hard, and I've take, I took a number of different calls on this street as well, and what we were able to do is get a really good deal, because a lot of the projects, you'll see that we're going to talk about street reconstruction, this one is just the street, it's not the curb and gutter, it's not water mains, it's not anything, and so, all of that work typically has to happen before the paving piece, and so the pavers are kind of waiting for the work, so we were able to see if we can get this done. Hopefully, it'll start right after Memorial Day and be done in early June and clean up that street.
All right, motorists will be happy about that, but as you said, it was a rough winter, so that kind of translated into a rough spring.
Right, right, and the city staff has been going out, and when you get these really shallow potholes, you know, it's a different kind of mix that has to go on there, and you had to wait for it was warm enough for that kind of stuff to come, and so, the city staff is doing everything that they can to try and make these better, but it's a big project for them this year.
Yeah, on my way in today, I saw them out patching some streets, so they're still out there and working.
Exactly.
All right, council introduced an ordinance for code revisions related to multi-unit recycling collection. I feel like this is something that's been brought up a couple times now, and there's been many discussions about it in the past.
Yeah, we've had a lot of different work sessions on this, and city staff has done a great job working with the multi-unit building managers to see how we could work together, and what this does is, takes and makes sure that there is cleaned up the ordinances, there were some areas where there was things that didn't quite align, one, you know, whether it was weekly or bi-weekly, and twice a month, or what have you, and we also then put in a minimum standard for space from a recycling perspective, because right now, you know, there's so much more that can be recycled, and we need to make sure that we have the space, because what happens is, when that recycling bin gets full, if there's only one, it all just goes in the garbage, and so, adding that minimum, and it's a, it's a, really a low bar, I think, that we're starting with, and the vast majority of our units already comply with that, but it gives them flexibility of, you know, do they want to have a smaller bin pricked up once a week, or a bigger bin picked up every other week, but it's just the, we work on the volume.
All right, so like you said, low bar for now, you don't want to start something too overwhelming, but kind of want to get the process going there.
Exactly.
Okay, and like you said, there is a lot of stuff to recycle, but we're also seeing a lot of stuff of people throwing, putting stuff in the recycling that's not actually recyclable, so it is contaminating then, all the recycling.
It is, you know, and so, the staff has great stickers and works with the garbage haulers to be able to help educate people, and information of, well, you know, yes, your pizza box is cardboard, but because it has food on it, it can't be recycled, right? And how do you teach those, those different things, and looking at the different kinds of recycled plastics, and there are certain things that can't go in recycling, but our recycling center, like the styrofoam, can go to our recycling center, but not in your multi-mixed recycling.
Yeah, so like you said, it's a big education piece, is what it really is, so, all right. Council adopted or approved a resolution awarding a contract for municipal state aid street reconstruction project 19-2. We had several other street reconstruction projects that were done at our first meeting in May.
Right.
This had to come back because something with the bidding, correct?
Right, there was, there was something that it didn't, I don't remember all of the fine details, but this one, we didn't have the bids received and opened in time for the May, so this one came back, and this is a big project, and the municipal state aid, these are more collector streets, so there are things that we get government and state aid from to help, and we're going to be replay, working on Wedgewood from Round Lake Boulevard to Main Street, Olive from Main Street to 121st, and a big piece of Foley, that is, the city part of Foley from 115th to 124th, and so that's adding bump outs on some places on Foley to try and keep that traffic calmed, and some of the speed downs, pedestrian crossing beacon around the Sand Creek Trail Crossing, so, lot of things going on, and along with the other street projects, there's always neighborhood meetings that will tell people about all of the things happening with the project, and then we also have, they send out every Friday, here's the reconstruction update, so you can check the website, or sign up for an email that will just come directly to you to say, hey, here's what's happening this week, here's what's coming up, and for those people who are in these areas, if there's something that would affect them directly, we would put a door hanger on them, on their door to say, hey, water's going to be shut off tomorrow for this time period, if they're, you know, replacing a hydrant or doing some water work.
All right, so this, the contract was approved, correct?
Yes.
It was at a higher amount than you guys would have liked to have seen?
Exactly, yeah, what we've been finding, and we've been checking with, you know, neighboring cities, and it's, everybody's seeing it, that the labor prices are up, the material prices are up, and so, this contract was higher than our engineering estimate, and we looked at it and went, well, we need to do these roads, and what happens if we wait? Well, it probably just gets more expensive, so we made the decision that we would move forward with the work this year.
All right, and like you said, the Foley project, that, once that's done, that will complete that roadway basically, from Highway 10 up to the golf course.
Right.
Essentially, and I do feel like that area's been talked a lot about, up by the Sand Creek Trail there, and there's been some concerns over the years about speed and that trail, so hopefully, the neighbors in that area appreciate those improvements.
Exactly, so, more to come there.
Yeah, all right, that's all we had from our May 21st meeting, we want to jump back to our first meeting of the month now, which took place on Tuesday, May 7th. We have a couple items there to talk about. The first, we had two resolutions for new members to the Sustainability Commission and the Historical Commission.
Right, yeah, and it's always great to see residents participating in our commissions, and, you know, there's always still openings, so if you're interested, you know, come on down and sign up.
And that's where you got your start, right?
I did, I started actually on Economic Development, and then I moved to Planning Commission, and before I came to council. But we appointed Annie Hendricks to the Sustainability Commission, and Jennifer DeVries to the Historical Commission, so want to thank them for their participation and willingness to serve along with all of you out there who are already on our commissions.
Yeah, and I say, it's a volunteer position, they don't get paid.
Right.
But obviously, do work for the city, important work, and those openings come up from time to time, so if folks are interested, they can submit kind of a note of interest or some sort of application of interest.
Yep, and, and they do keep them on file, but a lot of times when there's a new opening, they will request more people to send an application again, so always stay in touch and call City Hall if you're like, I want to be on a commission.
Yeah, because the openings do come up, like you said, from time to time.
They do.
All right, council approved a preliminary plat and adopted a resolution granting final plat. This is for Riverdale Corner's third addition at 3021 124th Avenue. We're talking about off Main Street there, kind of by Northdale, and this is for a metro storage.
Metro storage, right, so it is a self-storage unit, and if you, you know, are standing in Menards Parking Lot and look across Main Street, that's where it's going. So, yes, we do have a moratorium on storage types units, and why is this coming? This application came in prior to that actually being in effect, so this one did get approved through the Planning Commission process, and then what came to council was the plat, which is actually just the legal descriptions of the land and how the boundaries are done.
All right, so one of these, we had a couple others that sort of prompted this whole moratorium discussion. Is there a reasoning, or do we know why all of a sudden these self-storage facilities seem to be so popular?
I don't know if we have that answer.
Okay.
There's, you know, a lot of people where, have more toys and stuff, and have a need to store some things, and less, and it tends to be a more cost-effective than looking to say, do I want to build onto my home, or do I want to build a whole new garage, especially if it's a temporary need, and so, having a more climate-controlled interior type of storage has been, I think, appealing to a lot of people.
Yeah, and this isn't unique to Coon Rapids, I mean, we're seeing them across the metro, but it does beg the question, suddenly, we haven't had any of these, then all of a sudden, you know, several, like.
Right.
Obviously, and that's something why you guys are studying this topic.
Topic, exactly.
Like, how many do we need, where are they located?
Where are they going, what are the different kinds, are there certain rules or design guidelines that we need to see for this kind of use, is it in the right zoning, and just to make sure that we're doing the right thing and guiding that development within the city the right way.
All right, council adopted the fair housing policy.
Yep, so, we created a fair housing policy, and then also, you'll see on our later meeting, we did a motion for a reasonable accommodation process, and all of that is part of our ability to get grants, free money, from the Met Council, right? So, to be able to do that, we need to have that fair housing, and the reasonable accommodation is to be able to make sure that if there is somebody who has a qualifying disability, that housing must meet that need, and so the reasonable accommodation process is, how would you apply for that accommodation, and that the policy then covers that, and then it also allows us to get grants, and so that's where we also have, on our earlier May meeting, we accepted a $200,000 grant from the Met Council, a livable communities grant for, to be used at Galway Place Townhomes. They're doing about $2.5 million of renovations for that, and because we have the fair housing policy and the reasonable accommodation process, that allowed us to be eligible to get the free money.
Okay, all right, and all cities are sort of required to do the fair housing policy, correct?
If, if they want to participate in programs and with the Met Council and get that, so, most everybody will do it because it's, it's free money.
Yeah.
Right, well, not really, I mean, obviously, we all pay for everything with our taxes, but.
Right.
Having the ability to put our application in and be considered, we need to have that policy in place.
All right, well, that's all the items we had on that first meeting of the month. You guys, as usual, had a couple work sessions.
Sessions, yep.
Seems like you do that on the odd opposite weeks of council meetings. One of the items there, you guys are already looking ahead to the 2020 budget.
Right, and it's a long process and cycle, so, in, in May, we start having very preliminary conversations with staff about what are certain things that maybe we want to see from council, and staff is starting to give us some foreshadowing of what are the things that they are seeing that might be a request or a need. Staff then works through everything, we look through probably around the July timeframe, we'll start to get a better handle on what is there with the budget, and we'll have some more concrete conversations versus hypotheticals, and then it goes through the fall, all the way to where we have a levy that is, what is the funding that the city needs, and then that happens at the end of the year.
All right, so.
So, long process.
It always seems like it just, it just continues, you just end the one budget and you start the next budget.
Exactly, it's always, always goes on.
All right, so we'll be talking about more of that in the months to come here. Also, you guys had a discussion on a possible Phase 2 for the Coon Rapids Ice Center, basically an expansion.
Right, so what we agreed, and the council approved, money to hire an architect to start to do a study, and with that, there's going to be a lot of community input, they're going to ask different groups and do a lot of different interviews, on, is this something that we need, how big, what would be included, are there phases, how much would it cost, and just to start to get a look at what are the possibilities for that space, and do we want to do something with it. So, our intent would be by fall to have this study completed, to say, what are we hearing from the community, is this needed? If it is, what types of things would be in that kind of a building, and what type of funding would be required to construct, and would that be in one phase, two phases, three phases? Totally unknown on where we're going to go, but this is just the start of the process, and we'll give our residents a number of different opportunities to participate and give feedback.
All right, speaking of opportunities to give feedback and participate, we had an open house recently, last week, on the possible Highway 610 East River Road, adding a full interchange there. Now, folks have probably heard about this for a while, because we talked about this at Coon Rapids Boulevard and 610 at one point.
Yep.
So, kind of tell us about where this process is at.
So, this happened in conjunction with an Anoka County project, which is the Foley Boulevard overpass, so, on Foley Boulevard, they're looking at taking the road above the train tracks, right? So, similar to what we're doing on Hanson, and as they were working, the engineers were looking at that, the, the crossing, and they're like, well, if we move over here, I can make it a shorter bridge and cheaper and all this stuff to do that Foley piece, and when they started to do that, they went, well, wait a minute, this gives us an opportunity to do a full interchange, because right now, we don't have a full interchange with Highway 610 in the city of Coon Rapids, and it's been something that the city has desired for a long, long time, and so, that open house on the 16th was really to talk about Foley, and then introduce the idea of the 610 interchange, and where we're at with that is, high-level concept, MINDOT has to look at it and say, would they even allow something like that, is that something that would fit into their plans? Then, if they are positive there, then we would go forward with the legislature to look at funding preliminary designs, to see what would it take to do that and the costs, so, it's very, very early, but we're working to make sure that we're as transparent as we can of what's happening, what are the steps, and to allow people to have feedback, because there is a neighborhood that would be greatly impacted should this happen.
All right, so that was a chance for the neighbor to come in, ask their questions, look at the designs.
Right.
And give their input.
Right, and, and it's just the first piece, and as designs, if it goes to that stage, then there would actually be design meetings where that detailed feedback would be looked at, and how would plans get tweaked, and that would be similar to what we did with Anoka County on Hanson Boulevard. We had a number of community meetings there, and the input from the community, the county went back and changed the design, because they, the community people knew their, their area, and they knew how their traffic flowed and had some better ideas, and the county made changes to make it more amenable, so they still moved the traffic, and the neighborhood got more of the things that they desired, so, it's not a done deal, it's a, very early in the process and very iterative, so, keep, keep your feedback coming.
Yeah, because it still has to get through this essentially interchange, or interchange exchange, I want to say.
Yeah.
Interchange committee at the sort of state level, sounds like there's some members from the Met Council or different councils that make up this, and they're the ones that say yea or nay.
Exactly.
To even be able to move forward with.
A design.
A design, and then figuring out funding and all of that.
Yeah, because, you know, there's, there's lines on a piece of paper, there, there's no engineering drawings, there's no, you know, detailed plans to say, how would this actually work, and if we get into detailed engineering, there may be some things that go, okay, this is a showstopper, but we have to, we won't spend that time or money to do that if the state says you can't even do it.
Yeah, and again, like you said, it's sort of in the comprehensive plan that we want a full interchange.
Exactly.
That and the third lane on Highway 10, I believe are our two.
Yes.
Top priorities, but there is no way to get, once you get onto 610, heading towards Brooklyn Park, you can't get off till 85th Avenue.
Right, and then, you know, you have to kind of make that U-turn on the way back.
Yeah, and same thing the other way, there's not really a way to get on, you know, at East River Road or Coon Rapids Boulevard to go toward Blaine, so, we'll be hearing more about this, I imagine, here in the coming months.
We will be hearing, I'm sure, this, you know, when you look at it, the Foley overpass project is slated for 2021.
Yeah.
So, and that completion of 2022, so that, I mean, we're talking.
Years.
Years.
If, if anything did move forward.
Years, yeah.
All right, but we hope to have no more, this, I believe this fall is when they're hoping to have some more answers if this is even feasible.
Hoping this fall to have the answers to see if it's feasible, and to see if we would have the option to have funding to even start a preliminary design.
Yeah, all right, so stay tuned on that.
Exactly.
A couple things we wanted to talk, soon here, our neighborhood meetings will be starting.
Yes, so, and Summer in the Park are meetings, that will be, there's two of them in June and two in July, the June ones are on Tuesdays, June 11th, at Parkside Park, which is just off of 99th, kind of by Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension, Magnolia, and then on June 25th, at Riverwind, which is near Coon Rapids, Crooked Lake Boulevard and Northdale. For those longtime residents, they know the Riverwind Building where the old pool was.
Yeah, you can check out all the improvements at that meeting.
We can check the improvements, you know, go play some pickleball at Riverwind, and, and at these meetings, the, what we do is, we bring staff to the community, so you can talk to our forestry team, our public works team, our community development team, police and fire are there, kids get ice cream, and we will be collecting your ideas and your input, you know, what about Coon Rapids Ice Center Phase 2? Is this a good idea, what kinds of things would you like to see there? You would be able to see the potential full interchange at 610, is that a good idea? Do you like it? And we, this is where we come out to the community and try and get your feedback in a, in a good, interactive way, so, there will be four of those this summer, and hopefully, our weather will cooperate because we're in the park.
All right, well, if you don't want to talk to the staff, you can always just come for the ice cream.
Exactly.
Because there's usually ice cream as well.
And the kids can play on the fire truck or the police car, and they have fun.
So, June 11th, right, Tuesday, June 11th is the first one.
Yep.
They run from about 6:30 to 8:00 PM.
Correct.
All right, those are always fun to see everybody out there. We have our concert series at the Coon Rapids Dam that kicks off soon as well.
Right, you know, we have our summer concert series because it is going to be summer pretty soon here.
They're saying.
Stop raining.
They're saying it's going to be a cool and wet summer, is what they've said this week.
Yeah, well, but June 6th, The Mooners, it's a classic rock group, will be our first concert in the park.
All right, and those are Thursday nights.
At the dam.
At the dam, and they get underway about 7:00 PM.
Yep.
And they have concessions and everything's out there as well.
Yeah, and there's the movies in the park that, you know, is actually this Friday, the 24th of May, which is maybe too late for people watching this.
Yeah.
But there will be another one at the end of the, the summer.
Yep.
And our Splash Pad is going to be opening here Memorial Day weekend, so, lots of things to kick off the summer, and get prepared for our July 4th carnival, you know, so that's going to be July 2nd, 3rd, and 4th.
Yeah.
Get it on your calendar.
That's coming up here as well, the parade is on Tuesday, the 2nd.
Yes, yes.
So, that's always lots of fun as well. You also want to mention something that Councilmember Demmer was involved in, correct?
Yes, at, for those of you who don't know, Coon Rapids High School is, this, has a Center for Biomedical and Science, and these kids are amazing, so, we got to go to their senior showcase, and there are four groups that did their presentations and their whole, I mean, these kids are taking the cellular structure out of spinach leaves, and I'm looking at this and going, wow, I don't know if I did that in college.
Yeah.
And they're in high school, and just fabulous kids doing that, and Councilmember Demmer is part of their advisory board, and because he's an engineer at Medtronic, he has hosted them, and they've come to Medtronic and worked, and actually, two of the high school students are going to get paid internships at Medtronic this summer, and they awarded him a CR1 team. are going to get paid internships at Medtronic this summer, and they awarded him a CR1 team, and just for him being such a great community member and participating and helping the kids, and so it was really fun, he was surprised, and.
That's awesome.
It's, it's great to, to see the things that we've got in the community that some people, they maybe don't know about.
Yeah.
But a lot of great work from these kids.
All right, well, congratulations to them, congratulations to Councilmember Demmer, appreciate you being here today and talking to us about our two meetings in May, and we'll see you back here again after our two meetings in June.